Okay, we're gonna go to item number 11, application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. Target number 15-268, one block 1030, lot 58, 240 Central Park South. The 240 Central Park South apartments an individual landmark and art deco modernist style apartment building designed by Meyer and Whittlesley and built in 1939 to 40. This is an application to install a rooftop cooling tower and associated condensate sprayers beneath the windows. This was also read into the record on April 29th.
Okay. Let me just open the hearing for that purpose then so people be heard. Motion open. Second without objection, hearing is open. Go ahead. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I'm Reba Ashby, Preservation Staff. The item we're using is 240 Central Park South, which is an individual landmark located on the corner of Central Park South, Broadway and Columbus Circle. The proposal is to install a rooftop cooling tower, which will be visible from several vantage points. Also, small spray vents will be installed underneath the windows located throughout all facades. The proposed cooling tower will eliminate the need for through wall air conditioning units for which there is a current master plan in place. The applicant has indicated that they will amend the existing window master plan to restore the heights of the hopper encasement windows to their original size in conjunction with this proposal if the word is approved. Professor Doug Lister, is here the...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Reba.
Good afternoon. I'm Doug Lister. This photograph shows the building core was restored around 2001 before we did our exterior restoration and then the other photos from about 2009 after restoration. And as you can see, the building is, the brickwork is much cleaner and it's been restored well. We still have window air conditioners. These are some photographs, some before and after photos showing the stain it originally had and the clean brick and repainted areas. We still have, as Reba mentioned, the master plan calls for, currently calls for window air conditioners installed and replacement windows. No windows have been replaced under the master plan. And we want to amend the master plan to get rid of window air conditioners and to have a cooling tower and sprayers underneath each window wherever a window air conditioner is located. This diagram shows a typical living space window. This is the original windows as it was installed, as the building was built in 1940. Between 1940 and 2002 when the building was landmarked, many of these windows were modified to accommodate window air conditioners and larger openings. And our master plan, that's this elevation right here, our master plan calls for keeping window air conditioners but raising the height of the lower bar to accommodate air conditioners that are large enough to cool the living spaces. What we propose to do again is to install a cooling tower and to modify the master plan so that we put the lower bar height at the same elevation as the original window. This is a plot plan showing the vantage points where we took the following photographs showing the before and after. So the slides on the left show the existing conditions and the slides on the right are gonna show what the cooling tower would look like in this area right here. I'll show some enlargements later in the presentation to show you. We're proposing to paint this the same color as the windows are now, which is a historically matched color that the owner is open to different options as the commission sees fit. This, excuse me, this view is from Central Park with, obviously without leaves on the trees. And then this view is from Broadway. This is showing the existing conditions and this is showing with the cooling tower addition. And it's the same thing. There is an existing boiler chimney and fireplace chimney flues that partially block the view of the cooling tower. This view is from the Time Warner Building on Columbus Circle. This view is from inside of Columbus Circle. Very, the cooling tower is fairly visible, proposed cooling tower. And from most vantage points, I think all, actually all vantage points along Central Park West, the cooling tower is not visible. This, these photographs show a installation of our, we have a sort of innovative way of getting rid of the condensate from air conditioners. And this, that involves spraying water out of a, from a little sprayer that would be located underneath the window sills in living spaces, bedrooms and living rooms. And this is the, this is the small brass sprayer. And we've tested that and I'll show you the test results in just a minute. Actually, here's the slide that shows the test. Let me explain what's going on here. This is the sprayer. This is a water stain that I created to see if there were any, that I applied to the building with a sponge to see if we'd ever get a condition where we had water or staining the side of the building, if we had water, of course, we could have an organic stain created on the building. So we did a test and we ran this for a week with a time lapse camera, and that's this camera here. And even with the magic of time lapse photography, I didn't wanna waste your time, but we watched it for a week and we did not have any, we did not create, we did not recreate any of this wet condition with the sprayer.
Doug, were you using chlorinated water for the test?
We were using tap water. Yes.
And so you're saying that A112, there's no evidence of the water?
The, this stain right here is a stain I put on the building because I wanted to see what it looked like when it was stained, what the, how the building, I leaned up, I literally leaned up this window right here.
Oh, not that window, another window. So you were leaning out of another window doing a test, not out of where the stain was, right?
Stain was missed?
Right.
This is an operable window right here. In order to see what the wall would look like when it was wet. I wanted to check to see if the wall would have a discoloration if it got wet. Because if it didn't, if it doesn't discolor, there's no point in doing the test. So I wetted the wall and I checked it for a week and we never got an instance of where we had a wet wall in this area. So, because we don't wanna have a situation where we have organic staining from any source.
So I don't understand what conclusion we're to draw from A112.
The conclusion to draw is that we, in order to have an air conditioning system, you have to remove the condenser, the water from the air conditioner some way. And we don't wanna have, our proposed way, we don't wanna have a situation where we have staining on the side of the building.
And you're saying we don't?
We don't.
Because a week later it looks like this?
Over the course of a week. We ran the sprayer for a week, which is not a normal situation, but we ran it for a week, 24 hours a day, to see if we could ever have a situation where we could have water on the side of the building. And we never did.
Thank you.
These are just elevations of the building showing the existing conditions. A little less than 20% of the windows have already been replaced on the building and the master plan is true, is obviously to replace all of them with the windows that have been informed for master plan.
Historic photo of the zone?
Roof plan showing the proposed cooling tower. This is the, this is the tower element, the water tank element. And then this is the proposed location of the cooling tower. I have some close-up slides if you're interested.
This was the historic?
Yeah. These just show the, our close-up of the tower.
Okay. Okay. Questions?
Just to make sure, so, just to be clear. So the, what you showed, the photograph of the slenderer space is what you're going to, right?
Window configuration.
The window configuration at the bottom, the bottom third, right, is going to be slender because you are, is it going to have, so which one are you gonna have at the end?
This is what we're, this is the original condition and this is what...
Where's your light? I don't see that light.
This is what we're, this is what we're planning, what we're going back to. One to the left, proposed master plan.
That's existing. Previously approved master plan.
This is the...
Or new windows.
I apologize, this should say, this should say, this should say existing master plan. This is what we're proposing.
So that's what you're going to, you're going from that...
This is what we have right now.
Approved or something? So you're going from that to that? Okay.
And how they... If that cooling tower or sun cooling tower goes on the roof, you get a system you need that will completely run the roof wall and window air conditioning.
Yes.
But you're still, but you're gonna have something running out the window to get rid of, that little sprayer?
Would not be out the window, it would be underneath the window sill. So it'd go through a mortar joint, through this little sprayer.
Okay.
But why does it spray water?
Water.
Condensation.
It's a danger for the cooling system.
When a, when a ring over...
Yeah.
Just like a window air conditioner.
Okay. Any other, yes?
Could you just go back for a second to the roof? What was, what's original on the roof?
Would you like a photograph?
Yeah, just for a second and just... Because there's a lot of other things up there at the moment, of course.
Okay. So, this is the addition right here.
Mm-hmm. That's what you're putting in?
That's what we're putting in. That's from the, that's from the west, that's looking from the west to the east. This is the west elevation of the building. This is from, this is the south elevation. This is from Broadway. So this is the cooling tower. And from the northwest, this is the, this is the cooling tower here.
And just to go back to the one on the bottom right?
Yes.
Just outline the original building, because there are other things I know that have been put up there since, yeah.
All right. So, okay. This, this is a fireplace chimney flue here. This is the boiler chimney right here. And then this is the water tower, water tank tower. So the only thing, from this view, the only thing that's visible of the cooling tower is this little area right here.
So then, so the trade-off is, is that the cooling tower will make up for going back to the original windows, the original window configurations, that's the bottom.
That's a trade-off?
Right. No, that's all I wanted, somewhere. So it's that simple.
Okay.
There are some... It is.
Okay. We're gonna go to testimony now and we'll come back. Thank you very much. Barbara Zay, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Star, District Counsel. Considering that the replies at the top of this building are integral part of its design and that the building's point five is a part of the iconic Central Park South skyline, HGC asks that the applicant investigate ways to integrate and conceal the cooling tower architectural features. HGC is also concerned that there's potential damage caused by proposed condensate sprayers since they will be spraying moisture onto the building. Typically, condensation is carried out through pipes installed and given to the air conditioning systems. This pattern of drainage seems unusual to us. HGC does not object to the look of the sprayers, but asks that the system be analyzed to make sure that moisture will not come out.
Okay. Mignon Reich, Reich?
Hello. My name is Mignon Reich. I'm a tenant at 240 Central Park House, 1973.
Just, yeah, there it is. Perfect. Thank you. Yep?
The question surrounding the cooling tower is, is it visible from the street? Indeed it is. Moreover, the shape of the cooling tower's top is slammed, not recalling to the same architectural art deco design of the top of the building. And even if this issue is somewhat, somehow circumvented, what matters is the rest of the system, which must also be taken into consideration regarding the original building's design. It is a new and very large addition altering the appearance of the rooftop. It is visible from the east, the west, and the south in particular. Where there was an empty space, there is now a tower. Worth noting, Community Board Five Landmark Committee, in the state today's state, they would have preferred 240 CPS had constructed a markup of the cooling tower, a requirement which was waived by LPC. We concur with CB5 and would be helpful to us to see a markup. Also very important, we, the rent regulated tenants at 240 CPS, did not receive the adequate notice to which we are legally entitled under the Sunshine Act concerning Community Board Five Landmark Committee's hearings regarding this application for the certificate of appropriateness heads who were unable to participate in the proceedings, whether in the big room or with expert testimony of our consulting architect, someone very familiar with our building. CB5 recommendation states that the applicant has proposed to modify an existing window replacement master plan previously approved by LPC by installing a cooling tower and condensation business. This refers to a master plan which the commission approved on 10/13/2004 and which expired on June 8, 2010. No further documentation was found. An inquiry to LPC from Councilman Garadnick's office, whether this certificate of appropriateness document number 046412 was extended, and if so, when, has yet to be responded to by LPC. So we have a question as to its validity. There is a question as well concerning the validity of the recommendation approved by CB5 Landmark Committee's system with regard as it referred to supposed prior LPC approval, which it stated has occurred. This is very confusing for the rent regulated tenants at 240 CPS in what is supposed to be a transparent and democratic process. We feel for change. Too many red flags. We strongly urge you to deny 240 CPS's application for the certificate of appropriateness.
Okay. Thank you very much. Isabel Madden.
Good afternoon. My name is Isabel Madden. I'm a tenant at 240 CPS.
Okay.
The alterations under review to the facade of 240 CPS compromised the integrity of its original design, the historic character of the building, and the intent of its architects, Meyer and Whittlesley. The proposed aluminum frame, commercial-looking windows have an industrial appearance, more institutional than residential. Furthermore, Architectural Forum in 1941 highlighted the fact the architectural character of these buildings stems in great measure from the fenestration. As LPC underscores in its guidelines, windows are a proportionally large, very important, and integral part of the architectural design of buildings. This is particularly true in the case of 240 CPS. The subtle, rather delicate and elegant scale of the steel window frames is one of the key elements in defining its character. A company such as Hopes, for example, which replicates original steel-framed windows in landmark buildings, understands that preserving the original intent and design means unlike the windows that are proposed here. The original windows, as conceived by its architects, are in graceful harmony with the views and setting. They open wide, allowing the air and the landscape to become part of our complete living space. For those with views of Central Park, the experience is spiritual, organic, special, each waking day. Embracing breeze and view, you have a sense of inner peace and gratitude. As someone who has lived at this address since 1977, I do not want this special and unique experience affecting our quality of life and enjoyment of our home to be altered. I am not alone. Moreover, to be altered for what purpose, actually? To accommodate the conversion to central heating and air conditioning? We actually rather prefer radiated heat from blowing hot air. More importantly, why landmark at all if we do not protect the original intent and design we are honoring by the very landmarking process? The proposed window replacement violates the aesthetic and historical legacy of 240 Central Park South as it does not match the visual qualities of the original. LPC guidelines state clearly that whenever possible, windows should be repaired rather than replaced. A percentage of deteriorated windows beyond repair is unknown, nor are we aware, and LPC staff field inspection has taken place for the purpose of ascertaining the necessity of replacement vis-à-vis repair or restoration. Our apartment contains more than 50 window panes and nine radiators. I cannot fail to emphasize, sorry, six radiators. I cannot fail to emphasize the scope and cost of such an undertaking in a housing complex of this size, 325 apartments. If claimed as an MCI by the landlord, it would prove devastating to the majority of rent regulated tenants whose rents have skyrocketed due to massive MCI applications. Finally, the appropriateness of penetrations into the landmark, melon-colored brick exterior, is obviously improper due to its historic designation. Worth noting is the mosaic, "The Quiet City" by renowned Cubist painter Amélie Ouzenfant under the windows of the second and third floors above the courtyard. It should not be exposed to possible damage from perforations to install sprayers. I urge you to deny this application.
Okay. Thank you. Harold Mendel.
Hi, Harold. Harold Mendel. I've been a tenant at 240 since 1991. The windows should be left as is and restored and rehabilitated as needed. The only way that replacement should be even considered or changed would be replace them with exact duplicates. The windows and the double terrace glass doors, there's not just windows here, there's a lot of double glass terrace doors that go out to the individual balconies and/or terraces. These are part of the overall integrity of the building. This was also changed with these new windows and doors to the entire entrance and courtyard of the building. The original architects, Meyer and Whittlesley, designed and constructed the building to take advantage of the location and direct views of Central Park. The windows and glass doors are key element in the design to take advantage of the light and the views. It is my opinion that the new proposed windows would ruin the design of the building. There's so many of them and it's really part of, key of the design, and it was designed to be as is. The proposed new windows are industrial and just plain ugly. In fact, the new replacement windows that have been added by the landlord are already ugly in the 20% that he's mentioned. Only the exact duplicates with steel casement windows would pass the original detailing of Meyer and Whittlesley. The design overall would be compromised. Also, the cooling tower to the top of the building disturbs the architectural elements of the tower. The cooling tower can be seen from the street. It will ruin in the play of the horizontal and vertical lines of the lower and upper floors of the balconies of the eight-story tower. There was a lot of money spent to rehabilitate the tower with the last MCI, and this would ruin the crowning element of the building. I'm also concerned that the WPA mosaic above the entrance to the building would be disturbed by drilling and adding the misters and the sprayers. The restoration from the last MCI could be jeopardized due to the drilling and possible dripping of the water from the new proposed system. The mosaics should not be disturbed. Also, it's my understanding by removing the heating radiators and plumbing associated with them to install new HVAC units is a considerable job. The amount of dirt odors, possible toxins, rodents, and inconvenience to tenants while living in the building is unimaginable. The tenants of 240 lived through deplorable conditions with the last round of rehab and renovation, and the health and well-being of the tenants were both compromised. This is just unjust. Lastly, I have one major question. How many landmark buildings in New York have undergone such a major overhaul while being occupied by the tenants? All tenants are guaranteed the right of the quiet enjoyment and warranty of habitability. There are two major buildings included in the property. This is enormous, and this can be, I just don't see how this can be done. In addition, all the costs, a lot of the costs will be passed on to the rent stabilized tenants, and this will cause outrageous increases in the rent. The MCI will make living at 240 prohibitive for many rent stabilized tenants. This is very serious, and I urge you to turn down what the landlord is asking for.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other testimony? We have received also a letter from Councilman Garadnick, who was referred to earlier, and Borough President Gail Brewer, both urging that we consider the views that have just been presented by the last three people who testified. And finally, Community Board Five recommends approval of the proposed modification to the existing window replacement plan at 240 Central Park South, 36 to 01 abstention. And the whereas clauses do refer to the issues that had been referenced in the, in the earlier testimony, but the final conclusion was a recommendation to, to this commission to approve the modification. So with that, yes. Go. Yes.
The commission has previously approved a master plan for new windows which were, had a modified configuration to accommodate an air conditioning unit. So the proposal is not to change the approved master, master plan window type except for it would restore the configuration to the original configuration.
The details of the window?
The details...
The volume of the box is all about?
The detail, it's an aluminum, they're not in here because that's not part of this application. The details would match the previously approved master plan details.
Previously approved, which was not something that matched the original.
It, we, you know, as with many of the steel casement window applications that we have, we've approved many times an aluminum replacement that closely matches but is thicker.
Okay.
So on page 104, that's what we're approving at the bottom right here is what they're asking.
So what they're saying is that if they get an approval for the cooling tower, they will amend their master plan to restore the original configuration, but they would retain the approved details.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Anything else you wanna add based on what's been said in the testimony? If so, go up to the front, identify yourself by name and speak to it.
Sure. My name is Jim Barney. I'm one of the owners of the building. I'm also a tenant in the building. I'd just like to say a couple of things. The reason we're doing this is to make it a better building, specifically make it a quieter building and make it an energy efficient building. We believe in double tank windows, building would be much more visible in its current location. And in addition to that, the, our energy savings are expected to be between 20 and 25 percent on HBAC. So, but with specific, regarding landmarks, two things. One, we have originally approved master plan as I said, so what we're doing here is coming closer to the original window pipe, leaning down that, lower bar, lower bar, and the window AC's out. Secondly, we're introducing a new air conditioning system. We think that, you've seen the visibility or lack thereof of the cooling tower. We're getting rid of through wall air conditioning windows. We're not putting in P packs, which are the drills that you see on a lot of buildings because, one, they're less energy efficient, and two, they're more intrusive. This solution with a little sprayer was recommended to this by Seers Corporation. And it, you know, what I'd like to emphasize is that it's a fine mist that comes out, it's not, it's not a drip. Like, you don't want it dripping on people's screens, you don't want it dripping down the facade. We're very concerned with the facade. We spent a lot of money restoring that facade and we don't want to mark that facade. So that's...
The cooling tower can be seen from the street. It will ruin in the play of the horizontal and vertical lines of the lower and upper floors of the balconies of the eight-story tower. There was a lot of money spent to rehabilitate the tower with the last MCI, and this would ruin the crowning element of the building. I'm also concerned that the WPA mosaic above the entrance to the building would be disturbed by drilling and adding the misters and the sprayers. The restoration from the last MCI could be jeopardized due to the drilling and possible dripping of the water from the new proposed system. The mosaic should not be disturbed. Also, it's my understanding by removing the, the heating radiators and plumbing associated with them to install new HVAC units is a considerable job. The amount of dirt, odors, possible toxins, rodents, and inconvenience to tenants while living in the building is unimaginable. The tenants of 240 live through deplorable conditions with the last round of rehab and renovation, and the health and well-being of the tenants were both compromised. This is just unjust. Lastly, I have one major question. How many landmark buildings in New York have undergone such a major overhaul while being occupied by the tenants? All tenants are guaranteed the right of the quiet enjoyment and warranty of habitability. There are two major buildings included in the property. This is enormous, and this can be, I just don't see how this can be done. In addition, all the costs, a lot of the costs will be passed on to the rent stabilized tenants, and this will cause outrageous increases in the rent. The MCI may, will make, living at 240 prohibitive for many rent stabilized tenants. This is very serious, and I urge you to turn down what the landlord is asking for.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other testimony? We have received also a letter from Councilman Garadnik, who was referred to earlier, and Borough President Gail Brewer, both urging that we consider the views that have just been presented by the last three people who testified. And finally, Community Board Five recommends approval of the proposed modification to the existing window replacement plan at 240 Central Park South, thirty-six to zero one abstention, and the whereas clauses do refer to the issues that had been referenced in the, in the earlier testimony, but the final conclusion was a recommendation to, to this commission to approve the, the modification. So with that, yes. Go. Yes.
The commission has previously approved a master plan for new windows which were, had a modified configuration to accommodate an air conditioning unit. So the proposal is not to change the approved master win, master plan window type except for it would restore the configuration to the original configuration.
The details of the window.
The details.
The volume of the panel.
The detail, it's an aluminum win, they're not in here because that's not part of this application. The, the details would match the previously approved master plan details.
Which was not something that matched the original.
It, it, we, you know, as with many of the steel casement window applications that we have, we've approved many times an aluminum replacement that closely matches but is, is thicker.
Okay.
So at page one oh four, that's what we're approving, the bottom right hand is what they're in.
So what they're saying is that if they get an approval for the cooling tower, they will amend their master plan to restore the original configuration, but they would retain the approved details.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Anything else you want to add based on what's been said in the testimony? If so, go up to the front, identify yourself by name and speak to it.
Sure. My name is Jim Farine. I'm one of the owners of the building. I'm also a tenant of the building. I'd just like to say a couple of things. The reason we're doing this is to make it a better building, specifically to make it a quieter building and an energy efficient building. We believe in double pane windows. Building would be much more visible in its current location. And in addition to that, the, our energy savings are expected to be between twenty and twenty-five percent on HVAC. So, but with specific regard to landmarks, two things. One, we have originally put master plans as set, so what we're doing here is coming closer to the window, five leaning down that, what, lower bar, lower bar, and the window AC is down. Secondly, we're introducing a new air conditioning system. We think that, that you've seen the, the visibility or lack thereof of the cooling power. We're getting rid of through wall air conditioning windows. We're not putting in P-Packs, which are the drills that you see on a lot of buildings because, one, they're less energy efficient, and two, they're more intrusive. This solution with a little sprayer was recommended to us by Senus Corporation, and it, you know, what I'd like to emphasize is that it's a fine mist that comes out. It's not, it's not a drip. Like, if you don't want to be dripping on people in the street, you don't want to be dripping down the facade. We're very concerned that the facade has spent a lot of money restoring that facade, and we don't want to mark that facade. So that's, that's a trade-off.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll go to a discussion now. Joan, please.
I can support this, and because I think that what you're doing is you're restoring the building to its normal, to its original configuration, but the only thing I would ask is that the applicant work with the staff to see if you can lower and the, the whole cooling tower, if there's a way to make it a little less intrusive.
Michael Devonshire.
I, I think in general, well, there, there's a compromise that takes place with the addition of the cooling tower, and I, I would, like my colleague, ask that the cool, new cooling tower be a minimal size. For, for me, it's not so much an issue because the, the chief aspect of this building is from Central Park, and you don't see it from Central Park, so, so I have very little issue with that. And I think the, the compromise that removes the through-wall and through-window air conditioners is something that's worthy of, of approval. One thing that worries me is the condensate sprayers. You indicated that you used chlorinated water to do your test. The, because this, the, presumably the condensate will be released in the summertime when it evaporates readily. Two things concern me. On the north side of the building, without chlorinated water, you've got an opportunity for biological growth where it soaks the brick. It's not such an issue with deterioration of mortar joints because I'm sure this is Portland cement mortar, night, you know, twentieth century. In your photograph, I see a couple of head joints that actually, unfortunately, didn't get repointed in your restoration, and so you do have some open joints on those facade walls. So two things concern me, that all of the, all of the mortar joints be properly sealed, and somehow you are able to do a test that releases non-chlorinated water on the north side of the building where you're more likely to get biological growth. If, if that test was completed successfully under the, under the purview of the staff, I would be completely in approval of this.
How long did you wait to see biological growth?
You'd see it in a couple of weeks, really.
Libby?
Because you're on the shadow side of the building.
I can accept the cooling tower at the top of the building as being part of a, a lot of accretions that seem to be happening at the tops of these buildings, and I don't think that it, that, that, the arrangement at the top is the primary feature of this building. And I concur that removal of those rustling window air conditioners and through-the-wall air conditioners is going to really go a long way towards restoring the image of the building as something quite clean and simple. And it certainly, the change to the window configurations in order not to have to accommodate air conditioners is also getting closer to its original, so I can approve all of that. And I, I'm, the spray thing is really interesting. I'm dying to see how it works. I mean, I'm nowhere near as optimistic that it's going to be not visible, but let's hope so. So go for it.
We'll, we'll let you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I found that this whole application interesting and the testimony as well, which I was sympathetic with, but in the end, you know, we can't stop the preservation and restoration of a building. So there are aspects of this building, like any other building in our city or anywhere else in the world, that deteriorate over time, and they have to be cared for, and particularly, we care for landmarks and particularly an individual landmark. So the question therefore is not, not doing the work, it's just a question of is it appropriate? And I think, like has been said before me right now, it, it, it generally is appropriate. I can certainly accept the trade-off of the minimally, either not visible, minimally visible, or really quite visible from aspects from the south and west of the new cooling tower. The trade-off being that we get rid of all the individual units, air conditioning units throughout, throughout the building. I too am interested in seeing how, I guess nobody will really know how this spray idea works, but I think if this becomes the test, it might be a model for a lot of future examples where this could be a terrific way to add central air to a building that didn't have it in the beginning. So I think also working with staff to minimize, if they can, the size and bulk of the AC equipment. I was even wondering, and I don't know if you have to bring it back, and if so, forget what I'm about to say, is there a screening, a brick screening that could be added to the building to sort of minimize the vis, the visibility of the AC equipment?
I, I agree with the earlier comments, and I think that the trade-off to get rid of the window units and to regularize them would be a major step in restoring the architect's original vision of the building and the design of the building and the importance of the windows to that design. I think that the, I, I worry about the sprayers and the water because I think that there will be, you know, over the course of many years, things go wrong, and I, I worry about the water's impact on the, on the masonry, but I think it's, I, I think we have to just see how it goes and, and keep an eye on it. It's, it's a landmark property, and obviously if it's degraded, it'll be seen and taken care of. In terms of the rooftop units, I, I would suggest that apart from looking at better ways to locate them or maybe have them be smaller, which can happen with staff, staff also look at the color. If they're shown, they're shown in the renderings as kind of a beige to kind of match the brick. I don't know if that was talked about as being the intended color or not, but, sorry, I missed that if it was, but I would say that they should contrast a bit with the brick, because right now you want to, you want to read that upper tower as an independent item and let the units be different, either lighter color to match those little columns or darker, but something that would be contrasting with and allowing for the original reading of that tower.
Diana.
Yeah, I having, I, I think it's the idea to look away from obviously all these air conditions, which are potential problems that you find in buildings, and really, really disturbing the facade with them. And in this case, there is nothing going on on top of this building that I don't find that the cooling tower creates that much more disruption to the visual experience of, of senses as stated, stated now coming in on our side. If it can be bothered, that absolutely would be a good thing, but appropriate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
As, as presented.
Yeah.
And I also think returning to the historical configuration of the windows obviously is, is going to be an improvement to the building, and certainly the cleaning of the, of the building and the facade has been to its benefit.
Okay. Verta.
Well, I think that some of the comments brought up by the speakers are important in terms of, like the window, it would be great to have the window back to its original detailing and to not have the, the cooling towers. I think that unfortunately, the way I look at it is that there is some collateral damage when you, when you do something, which I think is a greater good, which is to get rid of all the air conditioners and windows and the walls. And, and I think that anyone who appreciates, you know, fine architecture or buildings in their original forms would want that as the first, at the first level of improvement. So because this scheme gets rid of those wall and window units, I'm, I'm willing to accept some other things, like a detail that's slightly different from the original. And, and I also agree that there is a lot happening on the top of the building, and so the units are not as, as, as obvious as they could be, I suppose. But at the same time, I think that I would like to have staff look at it and see if there's something to screen it or paint it or whatever to camouflage it more so that it's not as obvious as it is.
Okay. I agree with the consensus here, which is to approve it with the trade-offs. Nothing is, is totally one hundred percent free of, of any givebacks, if you will, but I think this is overwhelmingly positive and important for the building. So close the hearing with that, with a motion and a second, and Michael Devonshire, if you wouldn't mind doing number eleven. Thank you.
In the matter of 240 Central Park South, an individual landmark, an application to install a rooftop cooling tower and associated condensate sprayers beneath the windows. I recommend approval, finding that the work will not alter or destroy any significant architectural features of the building, that the presence of the cooling tower of substantial size at this setback will be compatible with the step massing at the top of the building, that the primary rectangular form of the cooling tower and its beige painted finish approximating the color of the surrounding masonry will further help the cooling tower to be well-integrated into the step massing of the building, that the cooling tower will not be visible from public thoroughfares, from prominent views from the north, and will remain below the crowning element of the building tower when seen from other prominent and secondary views, helping it to remain subordinate element, that the proposed condensate sprayers will be installed at mortar joints only and be barely perceptible, a barely perceptible presence from public thoroughfares. The sprayers will only emit a water mist, which will not damage or discolor the masonry, and that the proposed work will be done in conjunction with an amendment to the building's window master plan, allowing for proportions of the replacement windows to be more closely replicative of the historic conditions by eliminating an accommodation for through-the-window air conditioners, that the applicant will work with staff to reduce the size of the cooling unit if possible, determine a more appropriate color, and perform additional moisture tests under the purview of staff to ensure that there will be no biological deterioration of the north facade brick masonry.
Second? All in favor? I opposed. That's approved. Thank you.